And welcome to everyone. Our first item on the agenda is to review and approve the agenda. Jen, I have a motion to approve the agenda. Jen, thank you. And a second. Sherri, thank you. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please signal by raising your hands. It carries. Thank you. Now to approve the previous Board of Ed minutes from November 3rd. And we need to have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Is there someone who wants to make that motion? Sherri, would you? Thank you. And a second. Jen, thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. And that passes with unanimous. Comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the Board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? There being no one who wants to speak this evening, we will then move on to the Board of Education Subcommittee Reports. Ms. West, would you start us off?
Sure. Do you prefer that I stay here or go up to the podium?
I have no preference. Whichever you feel more comfortable.
Please stay here.
Okay. Okay, so we'll start with the update on the BOE Communications Committee, which is comprised of Ms. Appel, Ms. Richardson, and myself. And there is a presentation that was handed around, and it's also posted on the website for those who are interested. A key charge of the BOE Communications Committee was to increase stakeholder engagement and to collect perceptions on how we can improve our communications. And with this goal in mind, our committee, aided by Dr. Miller, administered a stakeholder survey in mid-October. And so tonight, we'd like to summarize the results for you. So I'm just going to go through this, and I think all of the board members have the presentation, but the audience members do not. But just an overview on the survey. The first thing we did was we reviewed other districts' surveys and collected best practices. And from that, we devised a 10-question survey to administer. And our goal was to offer a very brief focus survey to encourage participation, as well as to offer an opportunity for our stakeholders to provide written-in comments and their feedback. An invite was sent to all parents who have their emails registered with us, and usually that's both a mom and a dad in a family, and that's a total of about 4,200 parents. And we also posted an invite in the local newspapers, encouraging our community members to participate. We were thrilled to receive over 1,100 responses, which is a great response rate for any survey. And if you think about that, if you assume that only one person per family responded, that's about 48 percent of our 2,300 families. So that's a great participation rate. Most of those responses were from our families. We only received a couple from the community, so it can be assumed that the summary of this feedback is largely representing a parent's viewpoint. A few other notes on the survey itself, that we did receive a fairly equal response rate across all schools, about 40 percent. And in addition to the 10 questions, we did receive 162 written-in comments, which provided us with a wealth of qualitative research. One of the questions we asked was where do our parents receive their information from? And the results showed us that our parents largely received their information from email, from the website defined as either the district or a school website, and then also through our PTC and our PFAs. So drilling down into our website, there is some good news, that almost 60 percent of our respondents said they visit our websites frequently, either on a daily basis or on a weekly basis. So that's very good traffic. And then in addition to asking about their traffic patterns, we also asked what their primary uses were, and we provided them with a long list of uses. And from that, there was a list of top seven that came back: the calendar, power school, homework, school resources, dismissal manager, school closing and delays, and the PTC/PFA link. In addition to that, we asked them for their feedback on what would be most helpful to have as a quick link when we redesign the website, and the answers there were the calendar, power school, and staff directory. So needless to say, this is all very helpful feedback. It's going to be incorporated into our website redesign, and we're confident, once we incorporate that into our redesign and launch the new website targeted for early next year, we'll have even higher traffic. Another topic we asked about was social media. A task of the Communications Committee was to determine our social media strategy. And so it was very informative for us to learn that actually 56 percent of our respondents preferred that we not communicate on social media. And in the presentation, which again can be found online, there are some representative comments there as to the reasoning for that, including that the respondents felt that information should be pushed out via email or text, the sentiment that Facebook and Twitter breeds a culture that's undignified for administration, and the preference that just they'd rather hear directly from the BOE in an email format. So the implication of this is it really does validate our focus on traditional communications, which we define as push communications, which are email, texts, and also the website. And so we will continue our work on the Website Redesign Committee, which again is targeted for a launch of early next year. And we're also going to be looking at other communication enhancements, including text alerts, voicemail updates, and direct BOE email updates. Another question we asked about is what topics the respondents would like to hear more about. And there was a plethora of responses, but an observation is that the top three responses were all very closely related. Those were curriculum assessments and guidance. So we are looking at how we can best convey this information. We have had success in holding curriculum workshops, including the recent math curriculum workshop, which we had a fabulous turnout for, but clearly there's an appetite for more curriculum updates. So we're going to be looking at how to best do that. And overall, all the topics that we got back through the survey, we're going to be building into our PR plan and communicating more through articles, the newspaper, and through our PTC/PFA meeting speakers. So the last page, again, just in summary of the survey, is that, first of all, we would like to thank the large number of parents who took the time to complete the survey and provide us with the feedback. It did yield some very valuable insight on how we can improve our communications, and we're going to be following up on that. We are also going to be looking at how we could better engage our community members to participate in a survey or in other form to get their input. The second point in the summary is that the survey does definitely validate our focus on traditional communications. So again, we're going to be continuing the website work and looking at other enhancements. And then finally, given the large amount of constructive feedback that we received through the survey, it really does validate the need for, at least for right now, for Communications Committee. So our recommendation is that upon expiration of the Communications Committee's special committee's term later this month, that we convert this committee to a standing committee for up to three years. And we will return at the next board meeting with a charter for your review and approval. And with that, just again, singe it up, Jen, if you guys want to add anything and want to thank Dr. Miller for his help in executing the survey, and also if there's any questions, we can answer those.
Are there any questions that anyone has? I think it's a remarkable survey that 1,000 parents participated in this is just truly amazing and shows the interest and concern that parents have with their children and with the public schools and wanting to have that communication go on. And this is a wonderful document that you summarized it all, so greatly appreciated for all of us and help us in the future as we're trying to work out the best way to reach everybody and let them know what's really going on in the schools. Any other comments or things?
I know it came a little late as you started this, but I just want to make sure that, you know, part of the communications, as you mentioned, you know, the website's really important, and Jen's helping to lead, you know, updating the website, and we're hopefully rolling something out. And also just part of the PR plan, that we've also established another position with the different schools, a PR position that will help us to make sure that we highlight all of the great things that are happening at the schools, because oftentimes, if you're only at the high school, if you're only at the middle school, you don't know what's going on. And so this will hopefully get more information, again, fill that appetite for understanding what's going on at the schools and really realize, you know, how wonderful our school district is with all the programs we have available for our students.
Special thanks to all three of you and wonderful chairmanship. Thank you, Sherri. Any other comments on the communications? Moving now to the second committee, Ms. Carlson, the Resources Committee.
So the Educational Resources Committee is comprised of Allison Padula, Hazel Hobson, and myself. And we had our first meeting on October 16th to discuss the committee's initial priorities. An area that we identified in the coming months at this initial meeting was the board and town's health insurance policies. We held a joint meeting on October 29th with representatives from the Board of Finance, the Town Council, and the Selectmen's Office. The Educational Resources Committee invited this group to participate in a workshop that would be hosted by the Board of Ed sometime in mid-December, devoted to discussing the Board of Ed and the town's health insurance. We, you know, received agreement from the Board of Finance and the Town Council to pursue this, and so we requested that the various town bodies provide us with questions that they would like us to respond to at this joint Board of Ed. So this would be with the full Board of Ed, not just the committee. So the workshop would have the entire Board of Ed, liaisons from the Town Council, and the Board of Finance, all sitting around a table to discuss, you know, the health insurance. We're still waiting to receive those questions. You know, the hope is to have this workshop in mid-December, so we're, you know, actively pursuing getting that information from the various town bodies. So I'll let you know when we have more information about, you know, when we can proceed to plan this workshop. You'll also note in your information that Dr. Lettsi provided a calendar of all the budget dates for this calendar year, and you should probably add that information to your calendars, because it's rapidly approaching. So that's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about the Resource Committee? Seeing no questions, we'll move to the third. First, just saying thank you very much for getting the committee going and getting those questions and hopefully having us to have a dialogue that will help us to move quickly and professionally through all parts of the budget, as we have in the past. So thank you. And Ms. Appel, would you tell us about what's happening in the Strategic Planning Committee?
Yes, the Strategic Planning Committee consists currently of myself, Dr. Lettsi, and Scott Gress. We met at our first meeting in October, and we were talking about, you know, our first part of what we would like to achieve this year is to create a plan for our vision and how to go about getting a strategic vision for our school district. And so we went over through different ideas, and on December 5th, we're going to be actually having a workshop with the entire Board of Ed members to discuss, you know, what your thoughts are, what type of information that you'll need to help to figure out what this vision's going to look like, and so that we can kind of put it into a time plan. And so this past weekend, we actually had the CAPE Conference. Several of the board members were about 10, and they had some wonderful ideas about where education's going and what other school districts are doing, so we can take a look at best practices, take a look at some of the innovations that are happening elsewhere, even within our area and outside our area. And so we could bring those things at the workshop to discuss. I'd ask any board member, if there's a certain area that you're interested in, would like to hear more about, or kind of make sure that it's covered at the workshop, please, you know, send that to me so that we can have that addressed. We do have a speaker coming in. And then after the workshop, we're going to be having a follow-up meeting in January, where we're going to kind of go through all the ideas that are presented at the December workshop and bring in people from our administration, you know, to figure out who, what we need to do to get those questions answered and addressed. And I'm just going to turn over to Dr. Lettsi, who's been so gracious to invite this speaker to come in on December 5th, just to give a little blurb about who he is, and we worked with him earlier.
We did. Sure, I'd be happy to. Just one or two quick things as I do. First, the, this budget calendar, just so you know, is very much in draft form. You know, we have, we have the dates, we have some of the things, but it really, it's a working draft, but it was just to get the dates out to the Board of Ed, so that you can start to maybe put a few of them aside. But the Board of Education meeting we're talking about is the, it's December 8th.
December 8th.
It's Monday the 8th. And what we're actually doing, we'll have a workshop that evening. So actually, again, for instance, on the calendar, it has a presentation scheduled for the 8th, and you can put a line right through that, because we will be meeting with Jonathan Costa that night for our Board of Education workshop. And this comes from the work that Jonathan did with us in July, July 1st, with our Board of Education workshop that we did together. He'll be talking with us about some of the trends that are happening and that he's seeing in education across the state, across the country. Jonathan is a very strong proponent of the smart, intelligent use of technology for learning in schools. And as you, as you know, I think we had a positive experience with him in July, and he, so he's arranged his, rearranged his calendar. He's gone to a couple of different Boards of Ed across the state with a similar type conversation and discussion, and he's looking for it really to be that, to be a discussion that we have together. I've worked with Jonathan for over 20 years in his capacity with Education Connection. Now he heads up their Center for 21st Century Learning, which is a nice connection to the strategic planning work and the budgeting work we have ahead of us.
Great, thank you. So again, if anyone has any other ideas or make sure that we, you know, bring it up in the discussion, let me know, so we can let Jonathan know that these are areas that we want to make sure that we touch upon.
Thank you very much for your leadership on the committee, and I'm looking forward to the workshop. And we did have a wonderful learning experience at the CAPE Conference, the variety of workshops and learning about just what we've just heard, different things that are happening. It is an exciting time to be involved in education, learning a lot. Thank you very much for those reports. We have other committees and other leaders of different committees, but they will be giving their updates at future times. Thank you again for the leadership that's been on these committees and working for these goals. We are moving now to reports and recognition, and Dr. Lettsi, would you like to introduce this, or is this going to be?
I would be, I'd be happy to certainly get Dr. Miller started a little bit as he, as he comes to the podium. Dr. Miller's here for a follow-up presentation on the X1 Committee. As you may recall, over the summer, we had an initial presentation from Rob, and he'll be sharing with us the work that's occurred so far this school year, and a little bit about the sort of planning forward, what some of the plans are going into the spring, into the winter and into the spring. As you can imagine, this is a significant undertaking. This, we're talking, you know, on a school-wide level, both about sort of what it, what it may look like in sort of curricular implications and classroom instructional implications. And then there's, there's so many models. Every day seems like another, there's another model of a school that's doing something a little differently than anybody else is doing. So we're looking at all of those models and trying to be as informed as we can as we go forward with this. I do, I want to compliment Rob and Jill and Penny and everybody that's, that's on the committee, and a number of them are here tonight, I'm sure Rob will mention them, but for the really thoughtful approach that this committee is taking. You know, it's, I say this to people often, that one of the things I think that, that helps us in New Canaan, that really helps us to sustain the excellence that we have, is that we don't just jump to something because it's flashy and exciting and, you know, we could get some headlines for it. We really take a thoughtful approach to the work. And this is an area where some places have jumped to that flashy new thing, and they've really struggled as a result. So I think the thoughtful approach that the whole committee is taking is reflective of our values as an educational system and also help us set up whatever we have coming to be sustainable in the long run. Dr. Miller, unless Dr. Crenchie is, anything else?
No, so that you can introduce the next question. Well, good evening, and thank you for inviting me to provide this important update to you tonight. This is exciting work, and I'm pleased to share with you our progress. Before we get started, I'd like to share with you and thank those members of our committee that are here tonight. We have Tom Honahan, who is a technology integrator at the high school, Hannah Magna, who is also tech integrator at the high school and at Saks. We've got Sue Tremblay, who is an Assistant Technology Specialist K-12, and Brett Gillan, who is a Saks teacher also on the committee. Thank you, everybody. And Rodney Leduke, Principal of High School. And Dr. Crenchie is also in the committee, and Dr. Lettsi as well. So we have a large group of people, and I would be remiss not to mention Penny, who has been with us from the beginning and has had great contributions, so thank you for being part of the committee as well. As a reminder, our work is grounded in the district goals and objectives, which you can see highlighted here. Once again, our Steering Committee represents stakeholders from various roles and schools, and we have representation across the board, which has led to a comprehensive look at how this can really impact teaching and learning in New Canaan. The philosophy I shared in the summer is consist, has remained consistent. The first few slides I'm going to go over are kind of a refresher as to what I presented back in July, and we'll get into some new work in a couple of minutes here. The transition to personalized technology in education opens doors and opportunities to transform the learning experience for students. We believe this is a powerful way for students to take responsibility of their own learning, deepen their understanding of curriculum, and develop lifelong 21st century learning skills. When I presented in June, our next steps at the time were to continue working on our research questions, develop focus groups to gather input from our stakeholders, and begin to put together the budget requests that aligned with our plans. We divided our Steering Committee in September into three subcommittees. The first was a committee tasked to gather stakeholder feedback. That subcommittee invited teachers from the middle school and the high school to join that committee. Questions have been developed, and we planned on moving forward with focus groups and gathering input from stakeholders in the springtime. A second subcommittee is working synthesizing the research that we conducted from attending visits in other schools, external research, and taking a look at our own internal practices, as well as the comprehensive budget that's being analyzed. And the third subcommittee is that budget, is taking a look at what a comprehensive budget would be to move forward with a pilot and a full-scale implementation. I previously shared with you our five research questions. We have continued to focus on gathering answers to these questions and to use these to frame our work. When we met in July, the first three questions that we had spent the bulk of the year working on, as we moved into this year, are focusing more on questions four, five, and six. The work we are doing on developing and moving towards... One second, the computer wants to restart right now, and now is not a good time. The work we are doing on developing and moving towards the implementation of a mobile learning initiative is not unique. I have worked on gathering details of upcoming plans from local school districts that are comparable to ours. Some of the work being done in other districts has not been made public yet and may be wrapped up in their upcoming budget process. I've had conversations with individuals, and I can give you information, but you cannot disclose it. This is private information still. So what I'm sharing with you tonight is what's been publicly made, either through Board of Ed presentations or press releases that they've done, or they've been willing to share with me. So that's, what you see here is some data that's public, but the conversation details more of what overall is happening in the local area here. Many school districts informally enter their mobile learning initiatives in two ways. First, schools open up their wireless networks to allow students to bring their own devices at school. In the case like Westport, this allowed teachers to begin to see how technology in the student's hands at any time can impact learning in a positive way. The data gathered by Westport showed the high number of students bringing a device would yield a positive outcome if they required every student to bring a device into school. Therefore, they have moved towards a BYOT, or Bring Your Own Technology, required BYOT program for this upcoming September. Second, many districts have purchased mobile computer labs. These purchases strategically provided teachers a way to transform their instruction with a shared mobile learning lab. As teachers and students grew comfortable with the technology, some districts then began planning a larger scale rollout, exploring how this could be used at a wider scale. Their experiences informed their decisions on the type of devices that would be good devices to support student learning with their students. Here in New Canaan, we have done both of these. Our high school has had an optional BYOT program for a number of years now. In fact, we were one of the leaders in the area. We had districts coming to visit us as we began that work. Our high school, while BYOT, I do want to point out that learning experiences and teacher expectations are far different when you know every student's going to have a device and you can count on it, as opposed to an optional where you're not sure if every student's going to have a device that day. So knowing every student will have the device, teachers can then purposely plan instruction around curriculum and around teaching and assessment, where every student has an equitable platform to work from. Westport will begin their required BYOT program this upcoming fall. This month, or later this month, they'll be informing parents the minimum specifications required for their students to bring a device in. This is going to range anywhere from iPads to Chromebooks to MacBooks to PC laptops. They're giving families nine months to financially prepare and to purchase that device, and then in August, they will be running bootcamps to bring students in, have them connect to the network, connect to the resources, make sure they know how to use those devices for learning. They already have significant documentation on their website on how to connect from all those devices I mentioned to the school resources that'll be used in the fall. Any family that will not be able to fund a device, they will have an application process, and the district will provide Chromebooks to those students. Other districts such as Greenwich have implemented targeted pilot initiatives at specific schools. Last year, two elementary schools in Greenwich received iPads for every student and teacher in that school, in those two schools. That included a total of 1,054 iPads. At the start, the devices remained in the classroom for students to use only in the classroom itself and not to take home. All students of those two schools completed an eight-week digital citizenship course prior to allowing students to take those iPads home. Parents were then provided an opportunity to purchase additional insurance of those iPads. They would also provide the option of opting their child out of bringing the technology home to safeguard it in school, or not purchasing additional insurance. All homework that was assigned to students in those programs were geared towards web-based, so that students could either use the iPads or a home computer, either way having access to the same equitable learning experience regardless what device they had. This year, Greenwich implemented an expanded program in middle school in sixth grade using Chromebooks. And those Chromebooks were selected after careful consideration of a criteria and a committee looking at the resources, and they really wanted an integrated keyboard, and they wanted a cost-effective solution. Interestingly, that committee recommended MacBook Airs over the Chromebooks. However, the lower cost of the Chromebooks gave them a more significant cost savings, and they moved towards the Chromebooks over the iPads, but, over the MacBook Airs, but the committee had felt the MacBook Air would have a more powerful learning experience. In both pilots, Greenwich saw an increase in teacher use of their online learning platform. They saw evidence within online discussions, discussion groups, assignments, digital portfolios, and overall student learning. They saw an improvement in both the iPad program and the Chromebook program they did in sixth grade. In total, there were 144 Chromebooks that were deployed in that Phase II. SCARSDILL followed a similar path and has implemented pilots in specific grades. In sixth grade, they piloted in math and science iPads, and in the same sixth grade, they implemented Chromebooks in language arts and social studies. They wanted to see the results side-by-side of both technologies as learning devices for those various, those two different disciplines, four disciplines. Their pilot was being done to evaluate and inform their next phase of the project, which they're in the middle of right now. SCARSDILL also implemented a digital citizenship program that was embedded in their K-5 technology curriculum. Sixth-grade students take a quarterly computer class, and this class includes digital citizenship. High school digital citizenship is embedded in their freshman certification orientation program. And all teachers in SCARSDILL are required to attend a series of professional learning outside of school, and that series includes digital citizenship as a prime focus of that work, so that teachers not embed that within the work they do with their students. Each of these districts I spoke to, and the districts that are planning for work and are upcoming budgets, first lay the groundwork by improving the internal network so that it would support the digital devices in their schools. Before I proceed to the next stage of the work, I want to see if there are any questions about the districts that I've spoken about or the initiatives in the local area.
Sorry, second question. I guess two questions. So I know we've improved our internal network significantly. Do you foresee that we have done enough in order to implement, you know, an X1 or whatever for all of our students in our schools? And then secondly, I know we've, I don't know if it's trials with, can you just explain, like, what we've done so far? I know Saks, there's, you know, the fifth grade, I think, have, you know, mobile units that they all use them in certain classes, but can you, like, I know we've done similar things.
We've done very-
And what the results have been? You know, iPad, Chromebook, do we have Chromebooks?
We've done significant work in terms of the mobile learning labs. We have laptop mobile labs in all schools. We've implemented over the last two to three years, significant number of iPads as learning labs at the elementary school level, middle school, and high school. We've had a lot of success within that. The subcommittee that's working on the research question has compiled much of that data dealing with the professional learning activities that we've done, the activities that we've done with students internal, in terms of impact on student learning. So that'll be coming up. But we are, we've gone down the route of implementing both learning labs out of PC laptops, as well as iPads as mobile devices. The internal work that we've done with infrastructure- The internal work that we've done with infrastructure has yielded increased capacity at both the middle school and the high school. There is a Phase Two, and I have to defer this to Scott Barnett, who's heading that side of the department now. The work that has been done yielded tremendous positive impact on the use of 300-plus mobile devices at Saks for the implementation of our online assessment earlier in the year. So the initial work has shown that we have made great strides in what the capacity of the network allows us to do.
Go ahead.
I just had a quick question on the, you know, I know you're using Westport as a, as a model for the Bring Your Own Technology. Have you, have you seen a public district that's already implemented Bring Your Own Technology? Because I think that would be probably a little bit more helpful. I mean, you know, there's going to be, I'm sure, some pitfalls with that program, and I'd like to kind of get a little better handle on sort of what they've seen.
Right. In the surrounding area, the districts that have gone BYOT have been an optional approach. They've opened up their wireless and said, please bring a device if you'd like to, you don't have to, it's optional. There are districts across the country that have done so. We have some of that research that we've conducted, or that we've reviewed. There is a difference when you go optional to required, and districts have either, that have gone to a required device, have either said, all parents must purchase this device, either it's a Chromebook, or a laptop, or MacBook Pro, or they said, bring any device that you want, or they can say, here's the minimum specifications that you have. Each of those yields different results. If you know that every student must bring in this specific device, then teachers can plan for that type of learning infrastructure. If you're in the entire opposite side where students could have five iPads, six Chromebooks, seven MacBook Airs, and five PC laptops and two surfaces, it's a little bit more complex in terms of the dynamics of what you're planning for. So you see different results out there, and you're going to see different types of learning experiences. As I mentioned with Westport, they spent a lot of energy on developing content that is, or Greenwich did, that is web-based, so that regardless of what the student has at home, they can still access the resource. So I think that's the bottom line, is developing a curricular experience that is not dependent on that particular piece of hardware, but is supported on all the devices that you know that you're going to be using in the building or with the students.
And last year, the group went on quite a few visits-
Yes.
-to schools with all different models. Do you, some of those schools, some of the models that the group saw in those schools, some included all on one device, or different devices?
Yes.
And I know there was this school in New York, plenty of schools around in Connecticut. So that was sort of the, a broader look at some of what was happening.
Yeah.
And this, I think, the next piece of work was looking more specifically in this area.
Right. What was happening at the local region?
And I do want to just clarify, Jen and Rob is talking about the mobile labs. That is not a X to one or one-on-one device. So those mobile labs are assigned to clusters of classrooms, and so the apps are loaded or software is loaded. The teachers are pulling those when they want to use them for their instructional purposes, but they haven't been particularly assigned to one student to use. So it's a little bit different with the pilot that we've been running here.
Yeah.
Any other questions anybody wants to raise?
Okay. I'm going to transition to part two of the presentation, which is transitioning to the next step of what we are going to be doing next with our work. So we're currently planning an initial pilot for February. We're repurposing existing technology to implement a pilot with three classes at the high school. We are currently working with high school administration to develop that pilot. This pilot will be used to evaluate three types of mobile learning rollouts, for a one-to-one rollout. We plan on selecting three teachers from one discipline within a specific grade that are interested in participating in the pilot. We're going to be looking for volunteers within that department that'd like to step up and do that type of work. Some of the schools we visited and researched last year provided courses in digital citizenship as part of their mobile learning initiatives. We agree in providing that learning experience as well. We're planning to implement embedded digital citizenship learning within this pilot in February, in small increments within those three classes during the pilot itself. And then in January and February, we'll bring those devices in and begin using with the students. Students will go through a series of orientation sessions on how to use those devices as learning tools within our resources here in the, in the school, and then at home. And by the end of February, students will be ready to bring their devices home and use throughout the school day here. The students will be expected to use the devices the remainder of the school year. As we go through the pilot, we'll be expecting students to be reporting back to us. We'll have conversations with them. We'll be tracking the use of the tools to impact learning, and we'll be evaluating our work and making informed decisions on what the next step is going to be for the pilot for the fall of 2015. In this larger pilot, we also develop and provide digital citizenship learning for those students that are participating in next year's pilot. And both pilots will be evaluated along key intervals, and that data will be used to make decisions for the next stage after that. That analysis will be used to develop full-scale implementation, planning for the fall of 2016. So small pilot this fall, or this spring, larger pilot next year, and then anticipate a larger rollout the following year, fall of 2016.
Rob, can I just-
Yeah.
-ask a question on that. Can you just clarify, like, what you're looking to learn from these pilots? Because like Dr. Karanti just mentioned, we already have mobile learning labs, so we already have pockets where, you know, classes are using iPads for learning, or, you know, different departments are using them, or different grades are using them. So can you just clarify what you're trying to learn through these pilots?
I'd love to. So right now, the mobile learning labs are designed for teachers to sign out those labs for small increments. They might be a day, they might be two or three days, if you're lucky, four or five days, and then they go to the next class. And then you might not see that, that lab in your classroom for another month or two if you're, if you're lucky. They're spread out across the school. So there's a difference when you might have that technology for one or two lessons versus I know my students are going to have that every single day, so now I can build collaboration, build communication, build collaborative research, design surveys. I can design assessments, real-time formative assessments as I'm teaching, gather feedback. I can purposely design my instruction to take advantage of having a device every single day. So when the teachers have access to that, what is the impact on the curriculum? What's the impact on assessment? How does student learning change as a result of those students having a device for every class, every time that they're in that class? And then beyond that, as students have learned how to use these tools as a learning tool, because it's very different learning, very different using your own personal laptop or an iPad for entertainment, for your own communication. When you flip that to a learning tool, it's a completely different ballgame. So as students begin to learn those skills of how this really can help me as a student and as a learner, and they begin to use that device in their other classes throughout the school day, and begin to use it outside of school, at home, and on weekends for that same purpose, and we learn from them how they're using that device and how it's impacting their learning and impacting their 21st century skills, that's what we're looking for. That's what you don't have right now when you have a mobile lab that goes into classroom one, two, or three days in a row. It's, it's a completely different type of experience for our students. That's what we're trying to figure out through the pilot, of really how does that transformation take place, and what does it look like, and what happens to student learning when that, when that's happening.
So what is your, I mean, are you leaning one way or another? Are you doing, you know, leaning towards iPads, Chromebook, MacBook Air? I mean, are you, is that something that you're just going to, we're going to figure out, or?
Right now, we're looking at a pilot that will be most likely a set of iPads, a set of laptops, and then something that's in the middle, kind of a mixture of devices representing a BYOT type of environment. So we have three different types of classes that are taking place. We have data to evaluate. Is there a difference between students having iPad versus a laptop versus, and a mixture of those devices in that class? What does, what does it look like?
Right. And then as far as like budgetary, because I know, you know, at Saks, like the, you know, the parents actually funded, you know, a bulk of the iPads there at Saks, like, is that going to be in the budget for this coming year, paying for these, you know, implementation of these trials?
We are looking to budget, and then this goes back to Scott's budget as well, to the capital side. There is an anticipated budget request to support a larger scale pilot next year. This year's pilot will be repurposing existing technology. Any large scale implementation in the future, whether it be a full grade or full school, does have an impact on where that technology in that building, potentially could flow elsewhere in the district, because you might not need the same number of mobile labs or full computer labs, depending on what type of implementation you have. So you do have a ripple effect that does impact district-wide when you go to a large scale type of rollout.
Right.
Can I just extend on Jen's point? Because again, I just want to acknowledge how generous our PTC and PFA's have been in donating funds to buy the iPads and the technology. And I think it's really important that they all understand this vision, and I know you're working through it as quickly as you can, but that they understand the bigger vision, and they understand what they're purchasing and how that contributes to the vision.
Absolutely. There's no way right now, in terms of technology dating back the last 11 years, that we would not be anywhere we are without the generous support of the parents of this community, hands down. Going back to the smart boards, the iPads now, the parents have kick-started every initiative that we've had here, and in some cases, gone beyond the 50% mark of what it is the investments have been. So those investments, that passion, that dedication the parents have had, that's not going away. Those technologies are continuously being used and will be used, and those investments may, this year, will continue in that regard.
Thank you.
Yeah, Rob, I don't know if you've gotten to this point yet or not, but you're going to look at three different high school classes. Have you identified what type of classes? Because I know the digital environment's very different if it's a math class versus a science or a language arts. And are you doing three different types of classes, or just all, you know, different three, like, social studies and three different types of social, three social studies classes?
The initial thinking is three classes within the same grid, within the same discipline. We're still working out those details. We really want to work with the teachers that are interested in participating, because we want teachers that are very interested and are very passionate to see how this is going to work, and even invested in the pilot.
What kind of training are you doing with the teachers? What, where does that come from? How, how does it work?
The people that I introduced before are technology integrators. They are our embedded professional developers, our embedded coaches, our embedded collaborators. These individuals have done professional learning. Back in November, the November Professional Learning Day, the high school staff put on a fabulous menu of options that they ran, that students came in and ran, and teachers did, and it ranged everything from using Moodle as a learning platform, to using iPads for formative assessment, to all sorts of different tools that we've provided them. So they did a similar program back in August, and we have continual professional learning opportunities for our teachers. We do the same thing similarly in other buildings. And the fact that these are full-time staff members, where their job is to promote and encourage and to be coaches for technology, they're in the school doing that everyday work with teachers.
That's terrific. When they have a question, they don't have to wait for somebody from out of town to come in.
Yeah.
That's great.
And we're also piloting right now, this year, a series of students called Tech Experts that are becoming that initial wave where teachers can actually work with students, and they're developing training resources and materials for teachers. So it's really good to see students becoming part of the process as well.
That's terrific.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Yes, Penny?
Just, I mean, as part of the technology backbone upgrade, we did the sixth through 12th grade this year. As I understand it, we're still going to have in our budget for next year, upgrading the three elementary schools. So we'll have the technology backbone there that will need to go forward with some of these initiatives and embedding learning further in the elementary schools as well. So that'll be a budget item. We'll see the data on later.
Right. And as a reminder, in addition to the budget request for Saks and the middle school that this year implemented the grades five through 12, the wireless upgrades, through the grant that we invested last year, we're able to upgrade a significant number of wireless access points to the elementary schools. And the next stage of that is the internal capacity of the networks that connect everything together at the elementary schools. So part of that work was invested from the town grant, the state grant that we got.
Right. I think we interrupted you while we were going through.
That's okay. Good questions.
We couldn't wait.
Good questions. Just to, I'm going to just kind of summarize this slide very quickly here. The last point that I was going to, that I was making here is that each step of the way, the initial pilot, the larger pilot, the evidence that we're gathering, the data that's coming in, the conversations we have with students and the teachers, it's that data analysis that will inform the next step of the work that we need to do, in terms of the devices that we're going to select, the type of curriculum, the type of professional learning that we're going to have. That, those will be decisions that impact each of those intervals, and we'll make sure that you're part of that communication in terms of what we're learning and what those next steps are going to be. That communication back to is very important.
Thank you.
As we develop that digital citizenship learning, we'll be focusing on these nine elements of digital citizenship, which you can see here. So to conclude, our next steps are the following. First, we'll be implementing a pilot this spring, and that pilot will be used to develop the larger pilot for next year. All participating students, both in the fall next year, as well as participating in the spring, will be engaged in digital citizenship learning experiences. Teachers involved in the larger scale pilot will receive professional learning opportunities to prepare for the fall rollout. We plan on evaluating our work at key intervals and keeping you apprised of the progress, what we're learning, how our plans are being refined in each phase of the learning initiative. And at this point, I will stop and see if you have any further questions.
Veronica.
I just had one, one other question about, I know you mentioned that you're going to be testing the iPads and the MacBook Airs, and sort of some sort of combination of technologies. Are you at all looking at Chromebooks?
We've had conversations about Chromebooks. We haven't necessarily determined that Chromebook is what we're going to use. There are some opportunities that we're looking at Chromebooks in other areas, and it's possible that we navigate back to Chromebooks, but most of our work right now have been around iPads and PC laptops. So those are the two areas that we've been focusing our energy. That's where our internal tech support knows, that's where our teachers know, technology integrators, that's the knowledge base that we currently are using. We are looking to, to invest in some resources in terms of gaining that familiarity with Chromebooks, but right now, most of it's built around with PC laptops and iPads.
I just, I would encourage you to, to look at it a little more in depth, just because, I mean, the last, the last issue of Education Week shows how Chromebooks have now surpassed iPad sales, probably because they're less expensive for districts.
Yes.
And, you know, if you're evaluating a Bring Your Own Technology program, I think to be sensitive to parents in this community, I think that we need to make that a part of the analysis that you're doing.
Yeah. That's a good point.
Yes, Sheri.
Rob, I'm assuming that digital etiquette includes like cyberbullying, that whole discourse, and can you just talk about kind of the content that's covered there and how these devices obviously now extend our school day 24/7, and how, I'm assuming part of this program is emphasizing that that etiquette is, it needs to be in place 24/7?
Absolutely. And a key enduring understanding with our students is that whatever students do online, whether they think it's private or not, is creating what's called a digital footprint. So how do you use those resources in class and at home, your friend's house, in the car, anywhere you go, in that responsible, legal, safe, ethical way? And how to engage yourself in that practice and asking the key questions? Is that the right thing to do? And when it comes to cyberbullying, it's not just a matter of, am I the bully or not? What do I do when I witness it happening online? Am I a bystander, or do I actually stand up and speak up for that person and report that incident? So all of that, those key understandings, that's what that digital citizenship is, is about. And it's not just how to use this to work process, but how does this become an extension of my own thinking? How does this become a resource that I'm going to select those tools that meet my learning needs in that safe and ethical and legal and responsible way?
And I would just say, I think it's important that these digital citizenship lessons are extended to the parents as well, beyond the students and the teachers, because this is new for parents, as, you know, having a sixth grader on Instagram is new.
Absolutely.
And it's shocking how young these kids are getting these devices and, you know, so it's, it's-
Yeah. The communication to parents and parent workshops and presentations is something that's key and something that we'll definitely be partnering with. I know the PTCs and the PFA have done a significant amount of presentations, New Canaan Cares has done as well, and it's a matter of creating that thread, that partnership with all the different organizations to make sure that there is a well-rounded approach to what we're providing in terms of learning for parents.
I would think also that some of the technical help with parents, so that things happen at home, and understanding the assignments, which may be different than the kinds of assignments they were given in school.
Yes.
Might be helpful part of the training that Sheri's mentioning, because I think that it is different, and how to reinforce that would be good. Other questions or comments?
No, I just had a comment. I'm glad to see that you're taking this, you know, step-by-step approach, because this is someplace where we need to go, and you're right, we do need to make sure we're doing it right, because sometimes you have a great idea, but if you don't launch it the correct way, it still fails. So I'm glad to see that we're doing, you know, the proper things and figuring out what's the best for our school district. And just to kind of echo along, I'm glad to hear what you're saying about the digital footprint. You know, that was one of the things that they really talked about at this conference that we went to, you know, how important it is and for students to really understand that this digital footprint lasts forever, and when they're looking forward, you know, and, and to get those lessons now, it's important, and that it goes down all the way to the elementary- the way to the elementary level, so it becomes a way of life. So I'm glad you're incorporating that digital citizenship, which includes, you know, as you noted in this thing, you know, a lot of the various aspects.
Yeah.
And that, you know, hopefully, once this works at the high school, that will carry down, except, you know, starting from our kindergarteners to understand the world they're living in.
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that update and, and learning. Thank you also to the many committee members who've come tonight, too. We thank you for the work that you're doing with the students and with the parents and with the teachers and greatly appreciate all of the leadership with it and what's happening. It's exciting for us to hear about it. Thank you. Ms. Harris, I think you're off the bat.
Well, good evening, everyone. I believe that in the email transmittal that Dr. Lutzey had forwarded to you on Friday, you all had the opportunity to look at the update, my colorful update on our, the status of our capital projects. As all of us know only too well, the town was incredibly generous in funding approximately $2.3 million out of the capital budget to the Board of Education for the 14, 15 year. And I thought it would be an appropriate time to give you a quick snapshot in terms of where we are and what kind of progress we have made. That $2.3 million includes approximately 1.1 of technology. And I broke the projects into several, well, a number of different groups. Item one was what you've already referred to in terms of the infrastructure upgrade for both Saks and the high school. And that was fully implemented, again, on time, on budget. And we've had a terrific success in terms of wireless access, network speed, all of those kind of things. So, so that one is done. You don't see any in-process or anything like that. The very bottom is our technology plan. That's the three years of existing leases and the new purchases. We have approximately $80,000 to $85,000 left in that $692,361, if you see that very bottom one. So again, a lot of that money was tied up in the prior year's three leases. But again, there were a huge number of units that were brought into the schools this summer. Probably 95% of them were in place, fully operational before the first day of school. And those that had some lingering issues in terms of creating the appropriate profile, bringing on the right sophomore, software and everything, took perhaps the first week of school to, to get those done. Again, I think it was a highly successful effort. The entire tech team worked very, very hard throughout the summer. A number of our folks who normally worked 10 months came in to assist, to make sure that happened. And again, I think kudos to the entire tech team. In the meantime, there's a lot of things that have been happening with facilities as well. And you'll see the floor tile, the west floor tile replacement in some of those corridors that was lifting up and everything, that was completed this summer. We've had a number of our energy conservation projects underway and some complete now. Actually, the South School chiller was replaced several weeks ago on a weekend. The HVAC unit, you can see all of these are town purchase orders. The amounts that those purchase orders are in, in effect. The valves is another group of work that will assist us. For instance, those of you who went on the tour in Saks, where one room was really cold, the next room, we were just melting. That all had to do with valves because they were not operating. And when it was calling for cooling, they didn't open. When it was calling for heat, it didn't open. And so there was not a lot of management going on. The controls were working. It's just that, you know, it's kind of like all dressed up with no place to go. The electronics are going, but the mechanicals were simply not working well. So there's basically $110,000 tied up in valves to try and make those controls actually communicate to the devices in the classrooms. Again, you can see that those are all implemented. They may not be fully installed at this point in time, but it's all in the works. You can see that the building condition survey has been contracted for. I'm expecting to see a draft within the next several weeks and we will be expecting to have some discussion in draft form with the board, possibly at our budget workshop on the 15th, I think it is. Although if we have it earlier, we'll send it out to you so that the dialogue can be really fruitful. Again, it'll be in draft form. We'll rework it again so that by the time the Board of Education has an approved budget moving forward to the funding bodies, we will have really defined timing, issues, items and dollars. So that again is, they've been out, Silver Petroselian Associates have been out going through all of our buildings and I'm expecting a draft. I wanted it yesterday, but probably within the next two weeks. You can see that we have already engaged for bid documents for the east and the south restroom upgrades. I expect those, actually, I had anticipated that this week we would put those out to bid. I have not yet seen the final bid documents, but because we would anticipate going out with a fairly fast turnaround so that perhaps during the Christmas, New Year's shutdown, we might actually get those projects done. And the, Bob has, Bob Willoughby has Aquarian and Fire Protection doing an analysis on the Saks backflow preventers. There seems, it seems to have become a little more complicated than Bob had originally thought. So he's now gotten the Fire Protection Group as well as Aquarian talking about it. You can see that we've got the South School Playground, Eberlin ha, is, is doing some work for us, but we don't have a full-scale project. That was one of those projects where we had requested significantly more dollars. So we're going to see if we can't take a slice and, and have a showcase of what we need to do on a going-forward basis. We're in the process of evaluating the Saks rooftop air handler that we had gotten $40,000 authorized. And Bob has already contracted for the high school demand meter, which should make a significant difference. The value of that is very important because the lower you can keep your peak demand, the lower the rate you get even, because if all the equipment comes on all at once, then the demand skyrockets. So then you're a bigger user, even though you're not necessarily that big of a user. So having some control over that demand, modulating it and making sure that various pieces of equipment can stagger coming on can help us in managing our electricity on a going-forward basis. And Dr. Lutzey and I have been in a meeting where the town's electricity consultant, energy consultant, has said possibly up to a 40% increase in electricity for costs for next year. That's a big gulp and it's, it's a million-dollar line item. So 40% change on that is one of significance. So all of these energy conservation projects hopefully are going to save us some dollars year on year. And obviously Penny has kept you abreast of what's happening on the Saks auditorium. You can see that we have a purchase order for SLAM as well as Tie &amp; Bond now, who will be doing environmental testing. They will actually be testing this Thursday and Friday after school. We have moved all after-school activities, so there will be no activity in the front end of the school so that we can have some informed decisions as we get into planning, developing process. I don't know, Penny, if you wanted to add anything on that at all?
No, I mean, we're going forward. We're doing our feasibility study now with SLAM. We think the environmental testing is important because we want to know if there are any hazardous materials there so we can plan for, you know, dealing with them appropriately if they exist. We expect it to be light, but it's always better to confirm. So I think we'll have a lot more information in a couple of months from the Saks Auditorium Committee and look forward to updating it to you. I guess the only thing I'd say is one of the things that I've been thinking about this project, I realized it. Some people say it's only a middle school auditorium, but, you know, it's, as one of the middle school principals said when we were doing our tours, it's, you know, it's, the facilities at the middle school should be equal to the facilities at the high school because the students are feeding in. And in fact, actually more, you know, the students at the middle school, each one of them has interaction in the auditorium multiple times every year because they're all taking choir, band, orchestra, as well as the number of them being in the place. So it is an incredibly intensely-used facility, as we found when we were trying to schedule the testing. And I, I look forward to presenting more details to, to you as we get more information.
And then the project group, item nine, which is the $175,000 of building maintenance that the funding bodies took out of our operating budget and put into the capital projects. You'll notice that all three of these purchase orders are very similar in nature. It's all for painting. And basically what we're doing is we gave small sections or designated sections in the three elementary schools. And there's, we need to quality control. We need to see how much they can do. What's the quality, those kind of things. As unit pricing looks different, but ultimately it's going to be the results and how much is it costing us to do similar, so that by the time we're done with this kind of competition, we will know what vendor we want to go with for, for the balance. Because most of this needs to be done in shutdowns. Again, we're gonna need to have teachers take things down from walls and stuff like that in order to do classrooms. So we'll focus a lot right now on the public spaces. So again, we thought that it might be an innovative way to take a look rather than just putting out one bid, just to see what is the quality of different painting companies. So let me see if there's any questions about this. It's just, again, it's about $2.3 million. You can see that we have about $1.9 million of it either completed or in process, which at this point in time is, has, it's been a busy year.
Thank you.
One question. The items in, in group two and three, I see that they're kind of pushing up against the ceiling of what we had budgeted. So I'm assuming those from what I'm getting is that those are pretty much, everything's been bought. It's just a matter of installation and we're not really looking that we may run over budget because the other ones are kind of further from where we are budgeting, but they're kind of earlier in the process.
We will not.
Okay.
Run over on our budget.
Fabulous.
Are there any other questions? This, yes.
Did Sheri, did you have a question?
Well, I just want to say, you know, it's, it's a wonderful presentation and the colors, the way it's all put together. But this, this sheet represents an enormous amount of work. And just so that you know, Nancy and Bob have gone to multiple Board of Selectmen meetings. They've had communications with, with the town and other folks around these contracts and around all of this work and working with the vendors and setting it up. And it really, it's an enorm, it's a very important step forward for us, you know, for our buildings and for the maintenance on, on these buildings. And the, the work that we're looking at here will result in significant energy savings and rebates as well as we go through and get this work completed and put these things together. So it really is, these are the things that, the investments that need to be made. And although they're not very flashy, you know, you're not going to see them or, you know, sort of like replacing the roof on your house, you don't see it while you're in there, but you don't have any leaks either, you know? And this will make a difference in the, in the environment in our schools. So really Nancy and, and Bob have, have spent an enormous amount of time sort of shepherding each one of these projects through. And I just wanted to thank you for all of those work, all that work.
It's, again, Bob and also Scott and the tech team, as well as Dr. Miller, who crafted some of this to start with. So there's a lot of people that are behind these, so.
Can I just speak from the board for a little bit and just say that I remember those tours last year. And every place we went, it was either too hot or too cold. The facilities in different places were very surprising to us. And thank you, just as what you've said about what the wonderful job that you have done and that Bob has done. And I think it was very nice to thank the town fathers for this or, and mothers on those committees for the financing of this because it really has and will make a tremendous difference just as what you're describing for the future.
Well, and we'll be sending this forward to the funding bodies so that they can see we've taken this responsibility seriously and that we'll continue to monitor it. But again, there's an awful lot in place, may not be completed, but it's in the works. And we wanted to make sure that we assured you that there's a lot of behind-the-scenes things happening that ultimately will make a difference in everyone who walks through our schools' doors. But most importantly, there's hundreds of millions of dollars invested in the assets of this town. And this is just the start of the stewardship as we refocused.
Good. Penny?
I guess I would say if we're gonna have a tour, facilities tour, as we did last year, I think it'd be really great to get into the budget early on. Because I know by the time we came up with it, I couldn't go on it. And I would love to catch it this year. And so if that's something that we're thinking of doing, then I, it'd be great to get that date out and have people be able to save it.
Participate. Sounds good. We will see what we can do to manage that, right, Ms. Harris?
I was gonna add, I really like the way you put the reporting schedule because it's very easy to read and, and figure out what's going on and where we are with it. So it's very appreciated, you know, to have that summary.
Well, I'm, I'm a pretty concrete person. So in order to manage it, you really need to be able to list it out and then just say, okay, step one, step, step three. So it's simple, but, and I had to think of it in, in terms of groups. So, so that's why you got my groups.
That's good. Thank you. Part two.
Okay. The statement of accounts is as of October 31st. And this will be the first time this year that you're starting to see projections in the column. Up till now, what you've seen, and Frank Cavallari has, has shared with you the statement of accounts, you've seen where we were. Now, I'd like to stay on the summary page initially to Now, I'd like to stay on the summary page initially to indicate that as of the end of October, which is one-third of the year through, so we have completed four months, although only two months of school. We've spent 23%. We have encumbered another 8%. However, our cost center managers have been busy since October to again update their encumbrances on what they know is going to happen, get the purchase requisitions in so that you'll see a big jump in the encumbrances when I present the November statement of accounts. At the same time, you'll notice under salaries, under year-to-date encumbrances, again, there is nothing because we don't have the capacity right now to encumber salaries for the whole year. However, we're in the process. The Human Resources Department and the Business Office have been working very, very hard to update our human resources system and our intention to bring our payroll process in-house. We are going to begin the process this week of doing some parallel testing so that by January 1st, we will be going live with a whole new database with position control as part of the HR function, which will then allow us to encumber all salaried people. It will allow us then, it's, the HR system is Munis. The payroll system will be Munis. It will then talk to the financial system so that as we create a payroll, it will move from the encumbered to the paid. And so, we will have a much more accurate ability to project 80%, or 65% of our budget. And so, this is a significant effort on HR and business office staff. We have a wonderful implementer team from Tyler, which is the Munis Company. And I want to compliment Frank who has been just so steady and quietly keeping people on task. And so, he's been amazing in terms of doing that. And our Tyler implementer, the team is here today, tomorrow, and Wednesday. They will be back in two more weeks. And then, two more weeks after that, as I was mentioning to Brian, today, we're going to be tying in gross pay to our November 15th payroll so that we can make sure, that's the place you always start. Then you deal with all of the deductions and things like that. If you look at bottom line, you never know what you've got. So, you've got to start with the first thing, which is gross pay. And so, this is very stressful for our staffs. However, they're all in it to win it and it's going to work. So, hopefully, no, no, let me retract that. We will have a different look as we move forward on this statement, not for November, I'm sorry, but certainly for December, I should be able to give you the encumbrances figure for that. And I believe that that's mission-critical to effectively manage 65% of the board's resources, which are people. The other thing I want to touch base on before we get into the NIBI details is that overall, we're projecting a deficit of $535,684. And that is focused in several key places. But, you'll notice that in a number of these lines, I have projected out to zero because it is simply too early to even have a discussion about what cost centers are going to be spending on supplies and textbooks and those kind of things. It goes up and it goes down and all of those things. So, I've simply assumed that all of the budgets are fully expended for now. Those things will start shifting as we see more activity and as each of the cost center managers continue to encumber their known costs. So, let me stop there and see if there's any questions just on the 30,000-foot view. Or shall I keep going? Keep going.
I think we're enjoying the view.
For certified staff, which is the first page of the detail, I'm showing you more detail than you've seen in the past, except that these are our budgeted accounts. You'll see that for certified salaries, I'm showing approximately $60,000 deficit. Again, without the ability to accurately encumber, we are estimating, you know that we had to hire additional classroom teachers with the additional sections. We also had to hire additional special ed teachers. I am showing, I'm not using the grid progression at this point in time because it ultimately melts into everybody's salaries. So, I will ultimately move that into appropriate lines. So, it just didn't make any sense to project a use of that. The next page focuses in on the non-certified salaries. I'm showing a small surplus in administrative support salaries and the custodial and maintenance. The reason for the, we have several vacant positions in administrative support that we're in the process of refilling. So, they were here, they have since left, and there will be some savings there. And we have several people, custodian and maintenance staff out on workers' comp. We get reimbursed 80% of their pay on a week that they're out. So, we generate that unfortunately. It also translates to additional overtime. So, there's a plus and a minus there because the work still has to get done. And again, for overtime, custodial overtime and campus monitors overtime, at this point in time, I've just projected out the full budget. As we get further into the year, I'll be able to give you a better sense of that. Moving on to benefits, similar to last year, and when we developed this budget, you'll see that workers' comp has a shortfall. But, if you were to move to page 6 of 8, you will see a surplus on the liability insurance. With your agreement, I would like to move and adjust the budget for both workers' comp and for the liability insurance. It's going between lines, so I want to make sure that you're informed that I'd like to move that money so that workers' comp is budgeted, the adjusted budget is a correct budget, and that the liability insurance is lowered in terms of its budget so it's not showing as much of a surplus so that as we build our budget for this 15, 16-year, we're working on the correct base. So, you don't need to take an action or anything, I just wanted to inform you that I'd like to do that unless somebody has an objection to it.
Does anybody have any questions that they want to ask about that?
Well, I mean, we had said the liability insurance at a certain level, right? Now, are we just realizing that that was just, we don't need to have that much insurance so it's okay to move it or is that, are we going to?
No, what actually happened is last year, after I got into things, we had a discussion with the town and determined that the amount of liability insurance allocated for the Board of Education was overstated, but that the amount that was allocated for workers' comp was understated because we use Kerma and the town and the board collaborate and buy the insurance from them. So, this is a continuation of that reallocation. I didn't adjust the budgets last year and we just carried the deficit and the surplus. I'd like to fix that this year. Because we don't really need to talk about it anymore.
Everybody okay? Seems everybody understands.
Again, for contracted services, at this point in time, I'm simply projecting spending the full budgets. Similar on property services, the only thing that you're seeing is a small electricity surplus at this point in time. I have not yet, because we haven't fully implemented all of these energy savings issues, I'm kind of starting there, starting small, and I'm hoping that that surplus will grow. But, right now, I'm kind of being cautious.
Was that surplus also in consideration of electricity costs are going to be going up higher?
For this year, this is 1415.
15, yeah, okay.
So, we already have the pricing locked in. It's just consumption that I'm counting on going lower. So, that's a good thing. But, I'm sure you've heard the discussions going to the Utility Commission where the rates have been requested at pretty much a 45% request for rate increase. And some of the consumer groups are saying, that's too much, that's too much, drop it down. So, we'll see how that plays out. In the meantime, we're working to try and get some information from the town's energy expert to see if we can lock in at some more reasonable rate for the upcoming year. Moving on to what I think is probably going to be your most interesting page is for our purchase services. Again, there's some pluses and minuses on some of the transportation. We've already talked about the liability insurance surplus. But, as of today, I updated this projection because children continue to need outplacement services. And so, right now, this morning, as I ran my report, the balance is close to $580,000 in deficit. You will recall that there was a shift in treatment for the excess cost. In prior years, it used to be credit on our budget showing that if we needed it, we would use it. However, it's carried in a line in the town's budget as revenue. So, we will begin the notification process to the town. I will begin that through the CFO, Dawn Norton, who is already aware of this ever-increasing deficit. The issue is that as we document these expenditures that are over the budgeted amounts, we are required to notify the town and provide documentation for same. So, we'll begin that process. Dawn was at the town's Audit Committee meeting in which I informed them that this is the process that we would follow. They asked me, what are some of the things that keep you awake at night? And of course, salaries, benefits, tuition. And so, let me stop there and I think that Darlene is going to just share a little bit of information with you.
Unfortunately, I wish I could be as optimistic as Nancy was before she brought my topic up. Unfortunately, it's been a really difficult summer and fall for some of our students and their families. And we've had an unusual amount of outplacements that we've had to make, four in total, at different levels. These students are, have all been placed in therapeutic settings, either from hospitals or they have been in crisis in our schools. The majority of them have been, we've had issues of concern around safety. And in addition to those four students, there have been a number of students in the late summer and in the early fall that the district has been in mediation with over unilateral placements that students, parents have made, some for other-than-educational purposes and others just in their request for a placement that the district disagreed with. And so, I just wanted you to be aware of the fact, and I think I say this at least annually, that there are very well-trained teams in our schools that make these decisions. They do not come lightly. The administration in the building is deeply involved and embedded in the process of the decision, both when it is made and prior to it being made. And I can reassure you that this is not taken lightly and it is certainly the last preference that we would have for a student to leave us. And so, I'm very confident in the decisions that are being made. I am in the continual loop around all of those decisions with the administrators and typically the clinical teams. And it is very unfortunate and I don't sleep at night as a result of not only the financial expenditure associated with this, but the students who are in crisis. The hope would be that they would have the opportunity to return to us and that it not be a long-term placement. I can never predict that and I will tell you that in some of the situations, these are students who are in serious need. And so, I would not suspect that they would be returning at any point soon. In my conversations with my colleagues in other districts, this is not an unusual occurrence. It is to us. Typically, we have, over the years, the history has been that we've outplaced between 14 and 18 students. We've pretty much kept within that band. I believe this places us at 20. And in the dialogue that I've had with my colleagues and in the data that we have, typically other districts in our DURG have been in the high-teens to twenties range. And so, unfortunately, we, you know, I think that we've done well with this in the past but we've had a difficult time this fall. I think, unless you have more questions, that's pretty much the detail of it.
I was just curious if we'd done the analysis yet to know, because we have the outplacements
and we'll get back additional funds and the excess cost grant, what, how, you know, if we have the additional $580,000 and maybe the special ed transport is related to that too, so close to $600,000 in additional expense, how much of more we would get as a town from the excess cost grant? How, you know, how much that would go up above our projection?
Actually, it will go up a bit. Again, Darlene and her staff are getting ready to submit within the next two weeks, I believe, December 1st, I think, is the deadline. So, that's two weeks from now. So, the initial report will go in and then for January, the town will receive 75% of the calculated excess cost grant based on that initial information. And then, in March, I believe, the additional data goes in. And then, in May, the town will get the balance. So, as we talk to the town, well, yes, they should, the grant itself should go up. The base is four-and-a-half times our average per pupil cost of the prior year based on our submission of the ED001. That's the per pupil cost that generates. That's the per pupil cost that generates, not the general fund budget. And so, we will request, first we'll work to document our needs, and then expect once the town has received that seventy-five percent of the calculated grant, then we will expect seventy-five percent of whatever the shortfall is at that point in time. And then we will continue that because, again, the need could go up. It would be delightful if several children were able to come back into the district, but again, the spring is also a tough time for outplaced youngsters again. There's, you know, there's just a lot of turmoil in kids' lives. So we'll work this, we'll monitor it, we'll work within the framework of the excess cost grants. But I do believe that this will probably generate more excess cost grant than we had originally projected because it's a greater than anticipated.
Expense.
Expense.
Deanna?
I just have a question, because I'm not as versed in the excess cost grant world. But, so, when you make that, when you apply for the grant, you may, do you make an estimation for the entire year's worth of expense for those students, and then you'll get seventy-five percent of the total year's expense by January? Is that correct?
Approximately. I mean, there's a little more to it than that, but because, again, we include tuition and transportation.
Yeah.
By child.
Yeah.
And then if it is under four and a half percent, four and a half times our average per pupil, then there is no grant. So I think it's about eighty thousand dollars, eighty five.
It is. The threshold is about eighty-one thousand.
About eighty-one thousand dollars. So if a child is placed out.
It's gonna cost us less than eighty-one thousand.
Eighty-one thousand, then that's not part of.
We get nothing.
That's right.
Okay, so we eat up four and a half times. As a district, I think it's important to clarify that.
Correct.
As a district, we eat the first four and a half times of the first four, eighty-one thousand dollars of an outplacement that we have. And so, how does that work with sort of the town and do we get any, I mean, we just, that's what we budgeted for last year and, you know, we won't, I guess this money that the town has that we need to get, do they have, that's a totally separate dollar amount, that excess cost grant money that you have to get from the town, that four and a half is what we've already budgeted?
We have actually, actually Darlene can speak for herself, but the budget was developed on what we knew at the time.
Right, excluding the extra children, we had no idea.
Right.
That goes without saying.
And we keep a very well-developed spreadsheet of all the expenses that are associated with each student.
Okay. So, I mean, I guess, you know, looking forward, because that's not excess cost grant money that we can go back to the town for, how, because we have this big, an extra number of children that we're gonna have an extra expense for that isn't part of the excess cost grant money, how do we recoup that?
We would need to manage our budget to accommodate anything that doesn't fit into the four and a half times, which is assumed to be a Board of Education's reasonable anticipated expenditures. It's our contribution rate.
Right.
And so, within a budget.
Yep.
There's a lot of moving parts, and we have the opportunity to take a look. However, six hundred thousand dollars isn't one of those kind of moving parts that requires the same level of agility within budget management. So that's why we begin that process. And the law, ten seventy-six G subsection B, really helps identify that, and we can share that with you.
Benny, did you have your hand up?
What's our average per pupil cost? If we haven't calculated for this year, what was, do you recall what our average per pupil cost was last year?
It was around nineteen.
Nineteen?
Something?
It was something like eighteen thousand, two hundred and some odd.
I think she looks at it better.
I keep it at my desk.
For this year, it's, she's just looking for last year.
And how many outplacements do we budget for?
Eighteen. I believe fifteen.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're about five more than what we expected.
And I just wanna say, I have, having sat on the board for seven years, and I have incredible faith in the process that we go through, and I know you guys work incredibly hard as a team to make the right decision for the district and for the student on all these cases. And so, we're always interested in the budgetary, you know, implications, but we appreciate all the hard work that goes into getting these students the treat, you know, the services that they show that they need. So thank you very much for, not for your sleepless nights, but thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you, Penny.
You know, along those lines, Penny, just to mention, there are several ways that we look at cost containment around this, and I think one that's always worthy of mention is the launch program that we have. That was developed a few years ago and continues to be refined and improved. And that's just a way that we're able to contain some of these costs by developing a program here in the district that is so rich and well-structured for our students. They're staying here and learning and having, getting that education from eighteen to twenty-one years old versus having to look outside. So we're always looking at creative ways to try to, try to save and try to develop, you know, the programs here within the district. And that's, again, thanks to Darlene and her team putting all of that together. So know that this is something we're always very aware of and always looking at and, you know, trying to be creative around some of the cost containment opportunities.
I think you all also know that we have a very well-developed preschool program. And the reason that I defined the student who's had the needs in terms of the new outplacements is the needs are so great in terms of the emotional well-being of the student that it's difficult to accommodate them within a public school setting.
I think you've been so successful also with the programs that you've had as a result of the preschool and also of the intervention that you've provided throughout the education of the children, so that the outplacement, having the kids that go into the regular classroom is remarkable. And so, that's something that, a kudo to the Special Ed Department, and I just echo what Penny and also what Brian said, that you really do a terrific job with this. So we realize that this is not lightly done. For many reasons, it's not lightly done. And it's something that I'm sure you're gonna be working out ways to help us to get the budgets in there. We'll find, I know Ms. Harris is gonna make this.
It'll be a team effort, trust me. All of our cost center managers will participate in solving those kind of problems because there's no one person that handles it. It has to take all of the key team members.
I'm betting on the team. Does that conclude your, any other questions?
Unless there's any other questions.
Yes, Penny.
I just had a question about the health insurance line, because this health insurance line is really just a, we just take what we budgeted and then we take it down by a twelfth every month. It doesn't reflect our true cost.
That's correct.
So when are we gonna be getting the data on the true cost for the, you know, I guess the second year of the program?
Well, you're not going to get the true cost of the second year of the program until the end of the second year of the program. However, part of the discussion that Deanna was talking about in terms of having an insurance workshop discussion, obviously, we're gathering, actually, I think it was requested as we met, five years' worth of actual experience, so we'll have the actual of our first year of the HDHSA. But also remember that we shifted for this year from a hundred thousand dollar individual stop loss to three hundred thousand dollars of individual stop loss, and actually for thirteen fourteen. And that saved a million dollars in fees. It'll, it required us to take on the risk, but it saved a certain million dollars. And as we carried that along into this year, the fourteen fifteen year, and as the town council adopted the policy of sharing the risk in the health reserve, that also allowed us to reduce the funding. Now, in terms of the cash in the health account, Dawn Norton, the CFO, has already transferred five point five million dollars. She did that right up front because you really have no pattern in terms of the regular drawdowns for claims. You have to have enough money in the health account so that Cigna can draw down whenever they're processing the claims. So that's, ours is just an artificial taking it one twelfth down, one twelfth down. She actually put five point five million dollars into the account, and she'll reassess that as we move into the second half of the year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions about the budget? Thank you very much for that comprehensive explanation and details, and very, very helpful for us to be kept up on what's happening. We'll move now to the action items, and the first action item was election, is election of Board of Education Secretary. At the Board of Education elections held on eleven thirteen fourteen, two candidates were nominated for the secretary position, which resulted in a tie vote. After further consideration, Sherri West has withdrawn her nomination. We have as an order of business a motion renewing the nomination of Deanna Carlson for Secretary. Is there a person who will nominate? Jen?
I'd like to nominate Deanna Carlson to be Secretary, Board of Education.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Sangita, a second. Is there any discussion? Could be no discussion. We have before us a call to vote. All those who are in favor of Deanna Carlson, please raise your hand. That would be six of us all present who are memory of that. Congratulations. And now we'll move to the Budget Assumptions and Priorities in the second read. And is there anything that you wanted to add to our discussion about that?
Sure. The, in the pile of information that you had in front of you when you got here tonight, there's the revised Goals, Budget, Assumptions and Related Priorities document. I've taken the suggested changes and put them, you can see them in red, and what was removed is crossed through. One of the suggestions was to combine what was Roman numeral eight and Roman numeral five, thinking there was some redundancy there around assessments. So I looked at that and did that by adding reflecting national and international performance expectations using multiple platforms. The, in Roman numeral seven, on page one, instead of saying should be supported around our ELL, our world language programs, the conversation at the board meeting that night was, for that language to be a bit stronger and talk about them being instrumental to success for our students. So made those two changes there. Any conversation or thoughts?
I appreciate those changes. I was, I guess I had written it a little bit differently, so just for the board's consideration on Roman numeral seven, and I was thinking that we might say as such K through twelve language programs and ELL, English Language Learner Programs are core curricular programs key to student success. If other people think that that would be. I didn't want to suggest that, I mean, I've always seen the foreign language program as of equal importance and merit to the students as the math and the English and the science programs. And so, I kind of wanted to get that across. So I don't know if other people like that language or something.
Well, I will say at the cave workshop that we attended over on Friday and Saturday, there was a speaker from Finland there in the beginning, and one of the things he said was the focus on languages in other school districts. One of the ways to improve schools in the U.S., he said, "Languages, world languages." So that would, and it's something that we have focused on quite a bit. And I would say, certainly with our schools, with our students, that it's not treated as an elective, you know, it is a core curricular area by two cents.
So Penny, I just, I just want to check and confirm. Penny, did you, did you have a different wording for that you were trying to say?
I did. I was thinking after the, after the phrase "English Language Learners," we would make the end of the sentence say, "Our core curricular programs key to student success."
My only question with that is, in high school, though, language is elective. So how does that, that doesn't really, I mean, I agree.
Yes.
But in the high school, it's not, it's.
And that's something we might want to look at, you know, but that, the way it stands now, it's elective.
I guess my kids took it all four years.
Most people do, but it's not a graduation requirement.
So the word "core" could be confusing there.
Yes.
Is there another word for the word "core"?
Yeah, I think the language instrumental sounds, I mean, we're saying it's important.
Yes.
I thought that was.
That little R on the side's important to get that verb in there, so everybody knows how to read. Did you have something else, Jen, that you were?
No, I just don't, I just don't know how we can say that if it's core class in high school.
Right, we use that language as, right, core academic.
Okay, so that's okay, Penny, that far, we're still making it important as far as being there.
I think we're gonna continue to support the programs, however we phrase it, so that's fine with me.
Yes. Were there any other things you wanted us to focus on, Dr. Lutzi?
Just a few, there are a few, you can see in red, a few small changes to the wording just to make it a little clearer, and thank you for feedback around that. If you go to page four, C, Roman numeral one, there was some conversation about this at the board meeting as well, the previous meeting, and a recommended change there is to, the C one is new language, although it's in, it's not in red, I'm not sure why, I apologize for that. Changing to, to ensure that long-term capital insurance costs are addressed and meet the needs of all stakeholders, we will work collaboratively with town CFO and representatives as a change in that language.
Any discussion about that, or, I think that means, I think that means everybody's okay.
Okay. So then I would just ask if there are any other changes or edits and, or any other discussion? And say thank you for providing feedback. Very helpful.
Is there being any, we have, we have a, we've had the first motion where it was to move to approve the two thousand fifteen sixteen budget assumptions and priorities as first moved and seconded by Ms. Bedula and Mrs. Appel reflectively on November third, two thousand fourteen. Is there a second to that at this point?
I think we seconded last time.
Oh, okay. Second read, okay, we need to vote.
Vote to approve.
Our vote to approve.
We just vote.
Okay, everybody's ready? Okay. All those that are in favor of this, the way it stands now, please raise your hands. And that's unanimous of all six of us today, tonight, and passes.
Great.
We have a list of consent items that you have listed in the agenda, and is there a motion to move to approve that consent item, those consent items? Sangita?
Motion to approve the consent items as listed.
Thank you. Is there a second on that? Sherri, thank you. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand, and that's unanimous, all six of us. Announcements and future meetings. Dr. Lutzi?
Sure. Sangita already shared with us a bit about our next, our December eighth meeting workshop. I just, I do want to also mention that the good man, Charlie Brown, is opening this weekend here at the high school. The, there's also a Wednesday that we'll have an art opening with our students, Art of the Dream, at six o'clock here, right in the lobby here, which is our gallery. And that our Thanksgiving football game will be held at Boyle Stadium in Stanford, and we'll be playing Dariann for the FCAC championship. So lots of exciting things happening once again.
That's a lot of, very interesting things coming up and happening. Are there any comments from the public? Anyone who would like to speak? There not being any comments from the public, we will adjourn to executive session in accordance with six GS one two hundred parentheses six, the subject to be discussed, negotiations and confidential documents. Motion. Thank you. Motion. Motion to adjourn?
Move to.
Move to, move to.
Move to executive session.
Move to executive session, yes. Sangita, and a second on that? Sheri, thank you. All those in favor? Sorry. Penny, all those in favor? Thank you. And Jen behind that, six of us unanimous. Thank you.